Call the order in the.
God, we thank you for this evening that we can gather and God, we just pray that you would bless our community, bless our city, bless the people of our town. And God, that you give us direction as we lead, as we make decisions that impact the citizens of this community. So God, we just pray that you would bless this meeting, bless our people in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call please.
Here.
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 Chairman Harvey contacted me, said he will be here at this meeting. He has a prior work engagement. He is standing to, he will be here late, so we're gonna get him started. First item on the agenda is approval minutes, minutes for regular council meeting for May nineteenth, twenty twenty five. The edits, additions or omissions needed. I've heard enough sustained. Next item on the agenda is audience participation. Number of audience, like, um, up, distinct remain, address, clerk. We have five minutes to address council.
My name is Jeff Price, five hundred five Orchard Street. We're sticking to the filth. Allard is not doing, you know too, Chris, where you live. I don't know, someone told me, John Stevens told me yesterday, that they are now gonna pave this little alley that runs by my house. And make that a street. Is that their truth? Any proof to that?
Not by, not by your house, the one that they're currently using?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what was happening.
Well, they, they use mine more than they use it. So I get all the dirt and dust. I take my hose out, their water truck sits over there. The mud, the dirt. Got off to a bad start with Allard during the tornado, their big pipe hit my carport, knocked it sideways. Long story short, I said, what are you gonna do about it? Got a call from their attorney in Cleveland and said, oh, that's an act of God, sorry. Now, that's not the type, type of company I'm gonna deal with, okay? That was me, I fixed it for them, okay? That's just, but that's, as far as Allard goes, I'm not very happy. They also said, the power company told me yesterday when they were putting new pole in that they're gonna build fifteen houses in that area there, is that correct? That's not, what's, what's the plan?
We're ten lots, we have. But, yeah, we've discussed those big ten houses, but maybe less.
And you mean them on, what, that can be built there?
Yeah, they're being state or minimum value.
Okay, I just wanted to know if they put the house on market, so I can kick it.
It's R one district two, so it's also restricted to building.
Okay, I brought a few pictures, they're about wants to say, you can start to build it then, okay? It says Orchard Street is torn up, you guys. I don't know how much mud you deal with, but there's, where they went underneath with the pipe. It has never been right. The sewer is messed up, there's problems, there's a big hole in the street. When it rains. It's filthy, it's mud, we live in it. They love it, I guess, I don't know, I couldn't live like that. But that's what, that's what we deal with every day. I can't keep my car clean, the house is filthy, dirt, dust, you guys are even worse over on Bathin, I think, aren't you?
Yeah.
So I don't know, what happens when Allard says we're done? Is there a way to say, hey, this is wrong, this is wrong, come back and fix it? Are we gonna hold them responsible?
Well, we've been actually doing that along the way.
Well, I'm sure there's gonna be things, you know, that happen.
Yeah, so there's been things that have had to be, and that's what's pushing projects, some parts of project back, you know, throughout time. Some things we've kind of had to go down in there.
Right.
Others, you know, there was subcontractors that had, which we have to go back, we'll have to do. It's not costing us anything, but it's costing us.
What, what's going on with the sewer?
Yeah, that, so they're.
I'm probably taking one.
Not a sewer, but not like a structure to bear with, even like, something that's holding the pumps in place, it was housed, too. The housing on it, meaning the concrete, they've been trying to hold the pumps in place and stuff, it's all done.
Is that what Bamer did, or is that?
It was one of their subs that had done that, and so they're redoing all that. That's where we've kept the pump, the pump structure, apartment and stuff, so.
I mean, it was so nice to see Bamer come in and do that little section they did and reseat it, and now we got a flood wall again. Now, the part Allard has done, it's just a mess.
No, they're, yeah, they've done at least the lines and stuff, they still have.
Right, I guess they had some.
Um, is this private property?
That's my street, that's right next to my house. It's actually Fifth Street, I believe.
That was never supposed to be.
Well, that's what they do, they come, they use it because it's better road, okay?
I don't think that was ever in plans to be. Either way, though, I don't think that was part of the plan for them to.
Well, there's a big mud hole right past it.
Use that.
Anyway, that's just what we live with, and I'm tired. I don't know what we can do, but you guys have an answer? Orchard's gonna have to be already done, the heavy trucks were torn out, all that.
But yeah, I have mentioned that too, because I know we had that big water break down there not so long ago, that the streets were cracked and we just paved it two years ago.
Right.
Whatever's gotta, I said not paying for something twice, so we're at least gonna make sure that it's ready to be in some way.
Well, and it's like, speaking of water breaks, you guys, all this work's being done for Storm Sewers through the valley. It rains, Kathy and I spent thousands of dollars on pavers and a whole new pad for our driveway. My sidewalk floods, mud everywhere, I can't keep it clean. Why, why are we not doing something there for Stormlock? Is there something that can be done while all this project is going on? I mean, it's, it's not gonna get any better. I've had Mike Parerton and Ricky Jenkins in there, and then, rent the grader down, graded the road. It's still too high, all the water runs right into my yard. I don't know, I guess maybe I'm the exception, I'm the only one there, but.
No, but there is opportunity because of the future development that you were asking about. To avoid that affecting the people on the backs of the hill, the riverside of Karen, we were planning on running trench with.
I just thought this would mean I could tie.
So we could probably tie that, well, it would be in the next phase of that. Or we could maybe, Mike could just find another rig or two.
Okay, I don't know what that's.
I didn't know. I just.
That's some of those pictures that, that was my block.
But long term, though, I think that could be discussed before, like, before we're working on this plan right now. To go for the storm management on this, lots that would be sold. So that would tie right in to that road.
So I've gotta just live with it for a while, huh?
That's long term part I'm talking about. I'm saying we may be able to find a solution to help remedy this for now. Long term, I think we could definitely get rid of it and not have to worry about it back and grading stuff over.
Okay, well, like I said, I don't know what else to do. It's not, it's not working right.
We'll get there, just stay on top of it.
Okay, now let me, let me shift gears just a little bit. I don't know, you guys familiar with five seventeen Orchard Street? It's a house that Eileen Bishop lived in for years, and no one has lived in it for the last six, seven years, I don't think, since she passed away. It's fallen down, there's some pictures of it there. Yeah, that's it, Bob. You can see, nobody takes care of it, they just finally came and cut the grass. I don't know who did that. I've seen people there saying, well, we're here to give them an estimate, I'm tearing it down, but there's furniture. So we had to give them an estimate with the furniture and one with that. Someone else said HUD has been there. Someone else said, the realty company came and said, we're gonna redo it and sell it. So I have no idea what's going on with this, it's hazardous. The garage metal has come up, it could blow off and hurt somebody, I don't know. It's, Diane lives right behind, she talks about all the wildlife there, that, I'll let her get under that, but. You guys, are you aware that that house is there, that it needs something done? I, I don't know, Greg, tell me.
I'm, I'm not, and Jeff, I, I walked in mid-conversation, but honestly, most, most of the day-to-day things like abandoned properties and stuff, that, that council does not know about.
Okay, well, can I, can I now say this sometime?
Yeah, there's, there's one on, on every, on.
I know, it's the whole, they're not even neighborhood anymore, is it?
And there's, and there's limited funds to tear, to tear these things down, we deal with out-of-town banks, and when I say we, I mean the city.
Right.
It's not, and again, it's not us. It's you typically, the mayor's office or code enforcement that's dealing with these people, and then they do just enough to push us off. So they, you know, fix a window, or change, or change owners, or they do just enough, so I know, I know what.
We're, we're attached to that, but I just, I don't, I don't know what to do with you guys. I, I just, I wanna come up and talk to somebody and get it off their chest. Maybe you guys have some solutions? I don't know. Randy Leller was telling me, over your way, they're gonna put the new street in, that's like seventeen feet wide. Is that seventeen, eighteen feet wide? You can hardly get two cars past.
The, the street should be wide enough. It's, I guess from where we didn't have curbs, like true curves, it's gonna seem a little bit smaller, but. I've been through, I've got a pretty wide car, and one of the guys down the street drives a pretty big truck, and we, you know, we had to slow down a lot, but we, we could pass each other safely, so. Now, maybe coming around from Bathin to Florence, that may be, you know, obviously you might have to stop and let them go through or something like that, but I don't know.
Just to me, it makes no sense.
Is this the Orchard Street that you're talking about? Yes.
Yes, well, you know, I take Kathy's home, and Jeff Beasley were related to Eileen Bishop somehow. They'd bring her food and stuff, but when she passed away, I never saw them again, so I don't know. I don't, it was, she did a reverse mortgage on the house. And there's a, there's some signs in the window, I think somebody from the city came down like a year ago and said, we're gonna get this taken care of. Whoever the building inspector was, I don't remember at that time who it was, but nothing's happened. So, anyway, I'm gonna let these girls jump in here and see what I missed, but.
Thanks, Jeff.
Help us out.
My name is Diana Lee, and I live at five two Patricia Drive. I am here for the same reason, and may I preface things beforehand? All of us on Patricia Drive and Orchard totally understand that what is being done was needed and so on, but it was not planned well enough, and it's hurting people. I have pictures here also to pass around of what we are contending with. And what it comes down to is that whole area of Ironton has been overlooked. I pay almost eight hundred dollars a year for flood insurance, because I've gotten no satisfactory answers that our flood wall is being maintained. And I went ahead, I've argued with the people on the government FEMA, and they have been, they have given me permission to have that, but there were a couple of years that I had difficulty getting it. And part of the problem is, at the end of Orchard, there is a creek, and there is a culvert that comes in. Uh, to Green Valley from the river, from Storm's Creek. I have a picture of a culvert that is broken, and this is on Patricia Drive. The city has come in, it's totally broken, they have pushed rocks and blocks in there, and all the children. We have to tell all the children to stay away, the city has never put anything around it to protect the children from it. Storm's Creek, the little creek there that comes off of it, it looks like a seventh grade science project. There's a little clothesline thing that seems to keep it closed. But the water, it takes not even a minute for the water to come up to curb level, when it does, if it would flood, it did that one year. And that is something that worries me about. We have young children that play down there, and I have a picture, I could not get it developed, I will get it developed, so forward to show you. And if there, if we get nothing screwed to you tonight, please do something for Patricia Drive to protect the children down here. This culvert is small enough, is big enough for a little child to get in there out of curiosity to do something. The creek that comes off of Storm Creek is, they used to cut it down, they used to keep it clean, and now you can't even cut grass down there. It is nothing but fallen trees, and something is going to happen down there if, if, if the city of Ironton does not do something. And now we waited years and years to have our road on Orchard Street taken care of. They finally did it, and then, as Jeff said, all this big equipment has come in, and it's broken up the road. And when we drive over, they had to dig, I think it was a six or eight foot hole to put the pipes in, understandable. But we have to drive over it, and it keeps sinking, because when it rains, naturally it's going to sink. My son had to bring groceries to me because he has a truck, and we couldn't get over there, and I have a picture of that to show you. This does not happen except when it rains, so naturally we're very concerned. I have pictures of this house on five seventeen. I don't understand why the council cannot pass a law like other councils do, that this is not allowed to happen. I totally understand what you're saying, because people have told me that before. But we may be a town that has lost a lot of things, we may be a town that has trouble getting industry in here, but we can still have a nice town and have some pride in it, for heaven's sakes. And right now, we don't have that. I'm embarrassed for people to come to my house to go through, and this was before all of this started. As Jeff said, the furniture in this one house of Eileen Bishop's is exactly like the day that she died. There are mattresses there, we have raccoons, we have all kinds of animals that come there. I hate to see the bedbugs and the other things that are in there. And this is, you know, you work all your life, you get your house paid off, and then this happens. You can't go outside because there's animals, and you have to be careful of what's going on. A tree fell down in their backyard, and that was something like maybe a year ago, and it has never been taken up.
Diana, your, your time's up, I'm gonna address three things we'll get. The, first of all, the flood wall is rated by the Corps of Engineers, and. If it's your insurance, if it's your insurance that's giving you problems and.
And I've got to do that.
Um, the Corps of Engineers has a rating, and one of the reasons why we keep renewing the flood wall levy, it's the only levy that seems to pass over lawlessly in the town. It's because our flood wall rating is acceptable. So your insurance company should take the flood wall rating being acceptable. To, to the current broken culvert in Patricia, will you make sure flood street?
I did wanna speak on that part, so ODNR also was the FEMA administrator, so they're the ones that are probably not recognizing our out of floodway or flood plan, so. Corps is just in charge of our structural, of our flood system, however, which makes us, make sure we stay out of that. And they do not talk to ODNR, who is the FEMA.
But they're a government entity that provides a rating.
But it's ODNR is the ones that are over the flood, the FEMA administration of floodway, because we dealt with them on the riverfront stuff. They're the ones that won't recognize the, the area that was brought up out of the flood, that they won't recognize it until there is the survey data and all that showing. So what she says, where she does flood, that, it's not from Storm's Creek, but that, that culvert, just like the, that area has brought up the same ditch line many times. Has about ten from State Highway running into that back ditch there, which runs into those pump stations to pump into Storm's Creek. Which we've learned that we're gonna have to address that ditch line all the way down, you know, even after this project's done, uh, to manage the water that you're talking about. This house, sorry, I'm taking, let me take it, you were on number two.
Great.
The house, yeah, it, it's not that there is anything that makes it illegal, we have so many of these, so when it comes to tear them down. Depending on if it's got asbestos or not, you know, it's fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to tear them down, so we try to do as many as we can here, but we also try to utilize other resources that are tax delinquent.
And to piggyback on him, that was number three. As far as we're concerned, but there have been a few things, while I've been on council, Diane, I can't, I can't tell you exactly what's been done previous or, or. But while I've been on council, we've addressed things like abandoned and nuisance properties to make them pay utilities, because. If someone throws garbage out in the alley behind that house, they still pick it up, and so that homeowner, whoever owns that home, should pay, should pay for the utilities. They may not be getting water, but they should pay utilities for the, for the city services. The other thing is, they are fined for every, for every ninety days, thirty, thirty days, ninety days, if you remember. There's a specified period of time, and we only recoup that, one is to incentivize them to get rid of it, so that they'll sell it either to Land Bank, to another property owner, to somebody to fix it up. It's to incentivize sale, and the only thing that we see on the back end of that is the tax lien, because it's placed on that property from the city, and we're paid back after that property is taken care of. So we have done some things, but a lot of those things don't come to fruition until it's done, until it's solved.
So the council cannot pass anything to make this type of situation illegal, or not accepted in this town?
We already have.
Yeah.
Is it enforced or?
And, and it's a misdemeanor to not pay, it's a misdemeanor to not pay your utility bill, so. I, I think we've explored as many avenues as we can to address those, to address those issues. The, the prob, the problem is the expense of getting them torn down, if they're in the Land Bank or, or county, or if they're in our possession, which. We take care of as quickly as we can, but we rely on the revenue coming back from those tax liens to invest it to tear them another way down, so. We're, we're addressing that holistically, and that, that's the, that's the answer. It may not be a great one, but that's the answer. We have tried to address it numerous times through numerous pieces of legislation, at least on this.
Yeah, in the meantime, it's the things that we can do, because whenever the grass is getting out of control, it's working on that, that just adds some tally to our everything. As far as tearing down, like I said, that costs, I'm grateful they put a hundred thousand dollars in my demolition fund, and that's, we try to strategically use it whilst possible, but I've got. Plenty that we're, that, I'm pretty sure that property's condemned by us, but I've got a list of properties that were condemned already too, um, before that. And then, so if there's tax liens on it, now they're buying on taxes, I could go to Land Bank and have them try and take it, because they can only do tax delinquent properties. So it's not, it matters far as getting it torn down, that's just getting to a point where we can do that financially, and it's at that point in the list. And it's frustrating, I know. I, I remember looking at the house a couple of years ago, and thinking, it could be a nice house if somebody, it's a nice neighborhood, if somebody did put the money into it. Like, we will stay on top of it, at least with property maintenance, and it's been condemned, so the parts of falling in, those have already been addressed, it's just. Our only recourse at this point is to demolition and having somebody to do it, so. I do know, before you guys came tonight, that this has been talked about, which it was, you know, in passing, I heard, they were talking about it in the office.
Is paying, paying the taxes?
I haven't, so that's what they would have.
I was listening to purchasing that house, and there was a lady that this bishop lived with, and seeing the pies on it, and there got all.
Happy self, sir.
Thanks, Diana. Diana.
It's, the, the property is under Anna Bishop. It's not Eileen, it was transferred over from Eileen to Hannah, I have no idea who Anna Bishop. Is there, is the same lady?
Delinquent.
Anna E. Bishop, yeah, it was two dollars.
So, yeah, that's a little low for them to go after. Do you know what they're threshold? I mean, I'm on the receiving.
For the Land Bank, I'm not sure.
I've never been in order revision points, but I think they probably need to get some more delinquency.
No. Do you, which I'm just probably be the one to guess a question, but like, do you know if the price of any fines on the?
We cut the grass, we, we did.
Yeah, we cut it.
It's certainly something like daily fines until it's.
On building violations, it's not necessarily fine, as it is tearing it down is usually the way we handle that. I'm just wondering, like, if we actually were hitting fines, we got incentivized moving quickly. Does Anna, I believe, is in.
Yes, and so I think taxes on July eighth of twenty twenty four, though.
Was it a reverse mortgage?
When did she pass, yeah? It's been five or six years, I think. So I'm just looking at the tax bill, the only taxes that have not been paid are this year. There was a payment made March of twenty twenty two of three twenty two ninety five. There was a payment February twenty twenty three of four thirty six, and July eighth of twenty four, there was a payment of four eighty one ninety eight, so somebody's paying this. That would be the back, or I assume that it would be the back.
And then that starts the clock over again.
Well, and as I said, I don't know, I guess that's, I don't care what.
I mean, now, it's still condemned, I mean, until they fix the issues, that's it.
Let's get to Mary.
I didn't think it had a condemned sign, though.
I thought that Joe did, actually, over here.
Well, I'm Mary in twenty sixteen oh seven Karen Street. I wanna talk about sixteen oh six Karen Street that I own, and that has deep upward driveway, and it's show and tell tonight. I brought a picture of the driveway, and you had asked me, I said something about the concrete, so you can see what the concrete looks like. But this is two pictures of each end of the driveway. Look at it, two.
Look at it to me, there's, there's measurements off. It's either the street or it's the driveway. But you can definitely tell, there's probably six inches off from this end to this end of coming off up on the driveway. So I wanted to show that. And I'm still not happy about it, but it has a rise in it, and I continue to let the EPA know that, that that's not acceptable. I've got pictures here. Allards has not put any grass seed down, and I've been in touch with the EPA over this, because this is what we get every time it rains. We get mud all over our driveways, all over our sidewalks. And another picture I'm showing you is I wanna.
Is this like the Trelawny? Because Tim Collins sent me a bunch of pictures about the Trelawny.
And this is a picture, I wanna know how that water's gonna get to a six-inch drain that's not even close to it. Because that water's just laying in our yards, it's not gonna go to a six-inch drain that come back up, that we're gonna have to worry about mosquitoes. There's a lot, smell, if you have a drain and you don't have water every now and then go through it in the hot summer months, it's gonna stink. It's just, it's just not acceptable to put those, put those out there. I also have some pictures that I wanted to share from Thomas Street at the last big I don't, they said that the pump will start when the water gets so high, but the pump doesn't start, so I don't know if somebody needs to monitor that.
Who said the pump was running?
No, the pump doesn't always start.
It's not working, it's not in operation yet.
Uh, no, I'm talking about the temporary pumps they have, and they have three sitting there, and they say when the water gets so high, they're supposed to kick it. They're not doing it, you can see the pictures. They're not kicking it. And a lot of that is once, once Charlotte Street, but all the rest of that Thomas Street is totally flooded.
Yeah, this is the lowest point in that whole area. It's midsection of Thomas.
And also, I wanna bring up the fact that there's been, there was another sewer that collapsed this past week, so that's three sewers now on Karen Street within a fifteen-house range that they've had to replace their sewers. That, you know, that's not a coincidence. Come on.
Well, we had, we had two hundred and some thousand dollars in a fund just for broken sewer levels.
So did you take care of Mr. Pearson's?
I'm sure, I'm guessing, I don't know.
Was that?
I don't deal with day-to-day person, person on the project. But I'm just telling you, they're all made of that Kaila pipe, which is a newspaper. We anticipated a lot of them getting broken, which now you're gonna do that.
Oh, that's good. I'm glad to hear that.
If that's what they, if they.
Is that only, but is that gonna be after the year?
If you go break yours, Mary Ann, you'll be.
Actually, mine, at fifteen oh seven, where I live, mine's been replaced, just been replaced. Sixteen oh six has not. Now you see why I drill about the water laying in front of a very short front yard, and that water lane, they were freezing or whatever, there's my water pipes. That's my, that's what I get upset over. But where I live, those, we have replaced those on the outside. So I'm glad to know that there is, but is that gonna, how long is that gonna last? Is that only gonna be through the year after the EPA signs off on everything?
Well, it's like sewer, you're gonna know when you've broken a sewer line, because it's gonna affect somebody immediately.
I mean, is the city gonna help pay for that?
They have been all along, whenever we've, because we don't know where every, that whole area was built by some.
I know. I've lived there my whole.
Corner cutters.
Yeah, I know.
And so we didn't know where everything was, no, we were gonna get a lot of stuff, so it was, that's, I'm sure they've replaced it down, but.
And as long as she brought the creek up, and I'm glad she called it a creek, because we call it a creek, even though I was corrected that it's a ditch. And the problem is at five fifteen, and it's, it's past my property line, and it's that one long until we get to where she's talking about. That's where the overgrowth and all that is. I don't want my property ditched, and I'll tell you why. The last time they did it, it's very hard to get in and out there, because everything is gated. So when they go back there, they trench it and they just put the dirt right on our property. What happened, riding, remember, husband can't push a mower, we ride. You've got dirt standing this tall, I can't, I can't clear it off. So it took forever to get that work down, it took years to get that work down to where we don't have to worry about it now. So I don't want them coming through there. Mine, mine's kept clean, it's kept clear, and it's kept cut. And, and my neighbors are too. You've got that one where she's talking about, that is so overgrown, that's, that's the problem. And I think if you get that cleaned up, you won't have as much problem.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
What did you think about the pictures about the driveway?
Which ones?
Were you able to see the difference in where the driveway has a big slash in it now, the concrete, the new concrete that they put there, and how it's not even?
Yeah, but I don't know that it's done, and I, I, again, I refer to our engineers. I, I didn't design that, so I can't answer.
Okay, I got one more question. Allards was supposed to be done the end of May, and they said that they were gonna be fined three hundred dollars a day for every day?
It's fifteen hundred dollars a day.
Oh, how much would you collect it from, because it's past May?
No, we won't collect it, it'll just come off.
There, and, and I'm, I asked for more information, because this was not done through council, but they've been extended to July thirty first to complete it. My, my feelings about that personally, I'll only speak personally about it, not as a whole for them, but personally, I would rather them complete it well and do a good job if they need till July thirty first, than have them just finish something before May.
I think you've heard enough that they don't do anything well.
Well, but, but again, that's, that's my own personal feeling. And so is there, is there recourse for us? Yes, but again, it's after the work is completed.
Okay, and I just wanna mention too, with, with us getting more asphalt, I don't know if it's rip of the streets down there, but I watched a lady pull her weeds up and throw them out in the street. People blow the grass in the street. We've got hay from where they put so much hay down in the street. We've got mud and dirt, because that's all we have in our yards at the end of it, is mud and dirt. Every time it rains, rock. I mean, somebody needs to check that street out and clean it up before they.
You're asking one question now.
Yeah, but I didn't say anything last council.
Should be a statement.
Hey, John.
Sir. Amen. No, sir. Howie? I was just gonna comment and say that, one, I hear your guys' frustrations all the time, and I would be right there with you, and I, I can't speak for everyone else either, but I know for myself, I, I won't support Allard on any, like, I would personally vote for Allard to be on any of our projects in the future, because I already had it handled accordingly, and I don't think we will word that, we need you for that. So I'm sorry if I've been toward that, and I don't plan on supporting him, giving him any business in the future.
I'm gonna kinda address you guys as a whole, because I'm, I'm in the same situation. I do wanna point out that Allard was the only dead on that entire project. There's, I mean, legally, that was, they were the one and only one. So, you know, for us to get this funding, for us to complete this project, it is what it is. Lesson learned, I guess. Two, the flood levy, the flood levy that, that we passed, and like Craig said, it continually gets passed by a wide margin, is your security for, you know, worrying about floods. I understand you guys worried about that backside creek, but with the flood pumps and the, and the flood wall maintenance programs that we have through the city with the flood levy, I, I feel safe not worrying about flooding in, in Green Valley. So that flood levy, it, it does help out. Keeps our pumps running, keeps our flood walls maintained correctly. The vacant property, I have been down there, and I guess I just, I probably sledded with the kids or something. I, I know the house that you're talking about, but I did not realize it was condemned, and I probably didn't see it. I have probably seen it this spring, because I just, just tried to get out of my own road and down Second Street as, as peacefully as possible, so.
You can see the grass.
Yeah, I saw the pictures. So like, like Mayor Craig said, we do, we do have, and we've passed quite a few over the last five years, and even prior to that vacant property, you know, the, the ordinance requiring them to maintain a utility bill on, on these properties and things like that. So there's, there are, there are multiple properties that I know we're dealing with, and, and I don't think that, that department is, is, I don't think it's big enough to handle all the ones we have right now. Hopefully, we're chipping away, chipping away, and eventually, it'll get to where it's, it's maintainable. You know, we, we get one, we, we take care of it. We get one, we take care of it. Right now, there's, there's a huge list, and like Craig said, sometimes these property owners will either, you know, pay their back taxes, so that restarts the clock. Sometimes they will replace a window, get a, get a brand-new building permit. So there's, they, they, sometimes these people skate around the legalities of what we're able to do, and, and, you know, it's not right, but it's the law, and we've gotta, we've gotta understand that and abide by it. The, Ms. Tussie, from what I understand, the, there are, there's supposed to be more asphalt down, down there. I don't, now, don't hold me to that, because I don't know where and I don't know when, because I had a stroke when I got the text that said it's gonna be extended until July thirty first. So I don't, and truthfully, and I'm speaking personally, I don't think it's the day-to-day employees of Allard. I believe it's their management. I think they need, they need better leadership, because for one, they shouldn't be driving in, I've had multiple neighbors myself, I've had property damage, just because they're driving on your property, and they should not be driving like down your alley. They should, they've got an alley that they should be driving down, they shouldn't be driving down that. Their supervisors and their foreman and their owner should be addressing that. That's, you know, those guys, they've been, they've, they've, I'm sure they wanna get out of Green Valley, truthfully, but they, they've been, you know, they've been, they've worked well with me, and I don't know, like, I don't, you know, know most of them, but I don't know them personally, but, you know, when I talk to them, most of the workers, I try to, try to leave them alone, but like I said, I think it's the leadership, I think they need better leadership, and, you know, day-to-day, I speak to those guys and no problems with them. And, and usually, they will try to help you out, if you're like, hey, Van, can you, you care to put some more rock in here or something else? If we get a shipment, I'll put it down or whatever. You know, there's little things that they've done that I've asked for, like neighbors or, you know, at the beginning of the street or something, and, and, you know, it may take a couple of days, but for the most part, it, they do it out of, you know, to understand our frustrations. Like I said, I had a stroke when it was extended to the thirty first, so hopefully, like, and this is the first I've heard of that, orchard is completely repaid after this project, is that what you said?
I thought it hasn't been, I mean, whether we're gonna fight it or not, I don't, I don't have.
Wow, so.
I'm sure you guys are familiar with John Stevens, right?
Yeah.
Well, John's the one that told me that they're gonna pave that road, okay?
Not that one.
Well, that's what he told me, okay? Now, John is the guy that I tried to call to get ahold of Eric.
Was he standing on that road when he was?
Well, I think what he did.
Can we continue this after?
Yeah. You guys got work to do, I understand.
Yeah, let's, let's continue this after.
I'm good, yeah, we're good, that's all I wanna say.
Communications, there is a, there is a letter for property annexation to the City of Hyrton. I think we need to enter that into the record, I have a motion to do so. Jacob.
I'll motion to enter that communication into the record.
Sorry.
Chris, roll call please.
Brown.
Hi.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Aye.
Um, Griffin, that, that is the commissioner's first step, and we, we don't do anything.
You don't do anything until they've had their public hearing, and it comes back to you after they approve.
We do not have to have a public hearing for that. Correct.
And I, I relooked at that opinion today, so, just a second. So after the county commissioners approve the annexation at the next regular session of city council, council by resolution shall then accept or reject the petition for annexation. If the council rejects it, nothing else happens. If you approve it, clerk sends that to the board of commissioners and resolution ordinance approving the annexation, copy to the audit recorder and secretary of state. You gotta notify the board of elections of the change within thirty days, and then the annexation is approved. So you're waiting on about five steps from the county.
So I'm assuming the resolution to accept is like any other, if it, if it passes, does it have to have emergency language to pass immediately?
Yes.
And takes six, seven?
Yes, super majority.
Just keep that in mind.
I'll sponsor that legislation whenever we need it.
Yeah, we're just waiting for the commissioners. I don't, I think Nate did reach out to Ralph, somebody did, I think Ralph reached out to the county commissioners.
Any CC.
Any CC.
No, I don't think, I think they'll just tag me.
Me and you, okay. So it's up to the commissioners to take the next action.
Okay. Thank you.
Reports, there are none. Ordinances, if the court could please give first reading to ordinance twenty five, twenty four.
Amending a permanent operating budget for the City of Hyrton, State of Ohio for the fiscal year of December thirty first, two thousand twenty five, declaring an emergency first reading.
Bob.
I'd like to mention at this step, favorable recommendation by the finance committee, and I would like to make a motion to suspend the rule to get a second, third reading by title only.
Nate.
Second. Chris, did you have?
You're good.
All right.
Roll call please.
Brown.
Hi.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Rules have been suspended to give ordinance twenty five, twenty four, second and third reading by title only. If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty five, twenty four, second and third reading by title only.
Amending the permanent operating budget for the City of Hyrton, State of Ohio for the fiscal year of December thirty first, two thousand twenty five, and declaring an emergency second reading. Amending the permanent operating budget for the City of Hyrton, State of Ohio for the fiscal year of December thirty first, two thousand twenty five, and declaring an emergency third reading.
Chris.
Make a motion to adopt twenty five, twenty four.
Bob.
I'll second the motion, adopt twenty five, twenty four.
Did you have a schedule?
Okay. We have a vacant.
Roll call please.
Brown.
Hi.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty five, twenty four is adopted. Nate.
I'd like to make a motion to get recessed, city council allow for public utility payment.
Prior to the reading of ordinance twenty five, twenty three.
Yes, that's correct.
Second. I'll second that.
Roll call.
Brown.
Hi.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Aye.
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 Ordinance twenty five, twenty four is adopted. If the clerk could please give first reading to ordinance twenty five, twenty five.
Designating receipt and payment funds for the water meter replacement project and declaring an emergency first reading.
Bob.
I would like to mention a favorable recommendation at finance committee, and I'd like to make a motion to give ordinance twenty five, twenty five, second, third reading by title only.
Chris.
Second.
Roll call please.
Brown.
Hi.
Cleary.
Hi.
Haney.
Hi.
Harvey.
Hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Rules have been suspended to give ordinance twenty five, twenty five, second and third reading by title only. If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty five, twenty five, second and third reading by title only.
If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-five, twenty-five second and third reading by title only.
Designating receipt and payment funds for the water meter replacement project and declaring an emergency second reading. Designating receipt and payment funds for the water meter replacement project and declaring an emergency third reading.
Bob?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five, twenty-five.
Jacob? I'll second that. Roll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hock.
Aye.
Hock.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-five, twenty-five is adopted. Nate?
I'd like to make a motion to get, uh, recess, uh, city council allow for public utility payment.
Prior to the reading of ordinance twenty-five, twenty-three?
Yes, that's correct.
Second. I'll second that. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hock.
Aye.
Hock.
Aye.
The general council meeting has been recessed for public utilities. I also happen to be the chair for the public utilities committee, so following the public utilities committee, the order members, myself and Mr. Haney, uh, Mr. Perry's absent, members of large, the rest of them.
Make, make a motion to favorably recommend ordinance twenty-five, twenty-three.
I'll second, and Mayor, you did say there are no public utilities or easements underneath that? Aye. Did you, uh, last council meeting? Yes. I just wanted to make sure. Um, I second. Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Um, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn to PUC.
Roll call?
Aye.
Aye. Public utilities is adjourned? Nate?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to city council meeting. Second.
Chris, thank you. Roll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hock.
Aye.
Hock.
Aye.
Since I didn't get to do it first, call a worthy regular council meeting at June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and then I can take council. If the clerk could please give second reading to ordinance twenty-five, twenty-three, please.
Thank you, Cherry Alley, declaring an emergency second reading.
Chris?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and give third reading to ordinance twenty-five, twenty-three.
Bob?
Second motion.
Also make mention that it received favorable recommendation from PUC this evening, briefly, shortly ago. Roll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hock.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Rules have been suspended to give ordinance twenty-five, twenty-three that was favorably recommended by PUC third reading by title only. If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-five, twenty-three third reading by title only.
Thank you, Cherry Alley, declaring an emergency third reading.
Chris?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five, twenty-three.
Bob?
Make a, uh, second motion.
Roll call please.
Brown.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
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 Ordinance twenty-five, twenty-three is adopted. Resolutions, there are none. Dislanian, Nate? Chris?
Um, dump day, city, city cleanup day, uh...
You've got the text message twice.
I did too, I did too. Um, I did too. Tuesday and Wednesday, June seventeenth and eighteenth, Friday, um, and Saturday, June twentieth and twenty-first. Um, I did not get the times, though. Nine to five, yeah, I did the first day, nine to five. Is it nine to five? Nine to five.
I have this...
That's the, the new...
Old wall.
Yep, the new city garage.
Same. Um, not that it might be necessary, it's kind of a leak, or I guess, of a, uh, riverfront pretty much been ready to go. We're waiting on Department of Liquor Control for everything to get started ahead. From talking to Marley's, Don said that they, or council, to decide to act or not act on. Bob, you want a hearing on that?
I'm willing.
Can you do that prior to receiving it?
No, I, I just know he's always the one that moves. Liquor, liquor...
I was gonna say, that'll eliminate everything I'm about to say. I was gonna say, we'd like to get it going, we've got an idea of people moving in. I'll, I'll announce that, although I think they'll answer whenever we're ready, but, uh, really just, I think Rick's driving the Department of Liquor Control crazy too. But if they were to happen to get that to us in the next, in between now and the next meeting, would you guys be open to having this meeting just to not act or act?
It won't matter if the...
We can get everybody here, yeah?
I'll be on the house for it. Yeah? Need to get out, you and me out, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you don't take action, you just decide not to take action, you see the fact of it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, no, maybe.
Is it, was that a six, is that a super majority? Okay.
No, just majority, because it's not a resolution.
Okay.
So I'm just, all right, I was just putting you on notice in case that happens, although it actually does happen at that timeframe. So, yeah, I would have another business sort of downtown, that's some specialty hot dogs, uh, the Drifter's Salute are, uh, it's actually a pretty nice place, and, you know, some pop, and, got a few other things working, uh, some different concepts for Splash Park. Kind of move those people, literally take over the transit cafe, um, so, we're exploring some ideas with maybe getting some help from, some will work with CAO programs, and I'll just buy concession stand stuff for them, sell and stuff, so... That might be the most consistent way to do that thing, where I'll, you know, put concession stand, or, uh, yeah, things are moving forward up on the Ironton site and stuff too, so there's a lot of new parts going on.
Are there any exclusions on, uh, that they had usually? I didn't read the whole thing.
Yeah, yeah, no electronics, or...
Medification.
Meditations, computer, computers?
Yeah.
Okay. Building.
Appliances.
Building material?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Robbie?
I just have a few questions, maybe, for the mayor. Um, one is curious, where we advertised rental space downstairs, that's a big one. I just know there's one space that's been...
We haven't advertised yet, but we're about to. I have Jacob Mark working on that.
Where, where does that get advertised?
This, I don't know, it's, it's bid out just the same way it was.
Remember?
Yeah. We've been on, so, wherever I had put it out.
I'm wondering if, I, I guess my other thought was if that's something the city, uh, Facebook page, website could also help.
We could, I know there's enough people interested, so I would just put it out there.
Good.
Uh, another in relation to bids, I'm just curious, following up on the Allard conversation. Uh, when we put bids out for construction, where does that, what, where does that go? We're seeking bids for construction companies.
Where do they submit them? It depends, um, that one, that one was, with it being so large, some things are brought, um, that you've gotta get suppliers from out of the state and stuff, so it depends on kind of it, but sometimes they'll use this, there's a website where they could do that, and then there's other ones where they submit to the office. So it just depends, it's usually a cabinet, and then we'll deal with that, they ain't all bidding on it.
I just, I, it seems unfortunate that we're only getting one bid on some of these projects, and...
Well, the, there, the reason, some of them, with Allard particularly, they're ODOT certified, not many are, um, when it comes to those things, like especially the South Third Street, the other ones are Kiowa funded, so it's a ODOT also project, so they have to be, just like on this parking deck, they'll have to be certified, you know, ODOT, uh, contractor, letting that really narrows it down, um, for some things, but...
That's the...
They weren't the, so there was other contractors, there was just specific parts of that. Because we had three parts to this one on their north end.
But they were the only one on the South Third Street project, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering how we go about getting more submissions for pro, big projects like that?
I mean, most of them are aware, a lot of them just, they don't like paying the prevailing wage, that you have to pay with government funds either. So it depends on the contractor, really.
Um, the, uh, okay, related to what we're on, Allard, um, any updates on the South Third Street project? I noticed it seemed like it was moving pretty quickly, then it seems like it's slowing down pretty quick in the last few weeks.
Yeah, so, um, we're about to start doing the curving along through there. Um, it is moving along, it's slated to finish in the next month or so. Um, I think they have it till the end of July.
So I guess I can remember it.
But we're now adding to, to give you an update, there was a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that was pooled from the original funding, when we got the two million from EDA, because they had come up with the idea that you could match federal with federal, but it became state when it went to the ARC Ohio Office. So we're now allowed to use this, so we're gonna be expanding one down, I think, just about two dollars, like the bank, Dollar General, with just paving, um, with that money, and we'll be able to use it.
Awesome.
Going to be water line replacement, whatever.
All right. Um, and then, uh, the next thing was my, I, I noticed the streetlights downtown, I've seen improvement, but it looks, we still have at least a whole block out that's still in progress.
I...
I think it's still this one.
Okay, I'll just check on it.
And then the last one I have, you, uh, you hit the Splash Park. Um, I've noticed, uh, some feedback on the restroom's not being open, they don't have a vendor there, um, to manage that, and I guess I was wondering, is that something that Parks and Rec, or a combination of Parks and Rec and the police could tackle, that we...
Yeah, so on the weekends it's handled, because same height.
Right.
Form right market, but on weekdays. Um, I think we plan to have an idea by the end of the day tomorrow.
Oh.
We were, is, we were trying to figure out if we could get the help or not.
I think that's a great idea, using the CEO or someone.
If we can get, if, yeah, yeah, otherwise, it shouldn't be much of a cost to us to buy just the, you know, radiator or something, chips or whatever.
Yeah. Awesome.
Thank you. Picking back on Robbie's streetlight question, um, do you know if our, Jimmy Bishop's our...
Yeah.
Christian. Do, do you know, or can you ask if he has any way to check and see if, um, those streetlights are surging and causing those bulbs that have been low or, or not, not maximize their useful life? Because, um, I've had two different people tell me that they, um, they got ahold of Mike Piverden, because everybody seems to have his phone number, um, and that they came and replaced a street lamp, and then a week later, it was back out.
Wait, what, what, was this like on a residential area?
One was a residential area, one was downtown.
Yeah, Jimmy wouldn't, and that'd be a different situation, because those are diff, those are AP lamps.
Okay.
So they would know what the problem's causing that to happen.